I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Burgoyne, Gierbaugh, Peters, Rhodes, Roth, and Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, city superintendent engineer Rubel, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, DPW director Fordice, and our city assessor, Mrs. Skull. For the rest of you present in the council chambers this evening, if you would please sign in in the back to my left, I would appreciate that. Before I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, because there are several amendments this evening, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that our good council colleague, Mr. Roth, is celebrating an important milestone today. It's his birthday, and I won't divulge how old he is, because I'm a gentleman, but needless to say, he has the vigor and enthusiasm of somebody much younger. So, happy birthday, Mr. Roth, and we wish you many more years of health and prosperity in the Celine community, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Yep. So, the amendments to the agenda this evening are as followed. Under new business, item 13-193, we are not prepared to move on the rec center marketing campaign, so that will be struck and probably will return at our second meeting in December, and if not at that meeting, then our first in January. And then, Mr. Burgoyne would like to add a fifth item under the discussion portion of our agenda, and it's regarding the council guidelines. And then, Mr. Fordice distributed a memorandum to assist with our discussion regarding the water moratorium policy, and his memo is dated December 2, 2013, which I think you'll find at your seat this evening. And in the second-to-last paragraph, he cites a number of $54,175. That needs to be corrected. The accurate amount is $60,175. So, again, it is not 54, 175, it's 60,175. Unless there are any other changes to the agenda this evening, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, or amended, excuse me.
Some move as amended.
Okay, moved by council member Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. So, we move on to presentations. We have two this evening. The first of which is from Washtenaw Area Transportation Study. I'm very proud to have Ryan Burke here, who is the director. The title has been changed from executive director to director. Many of you may recall working with Terry Blackmore. She left the agency, I believe, late last year, and Ryan was brought on as executive director on an interim basis, and the board was so pleased with his leadership and abilities that we gave him that promotion in perpetuity. And so, we're very happy to have you with us this evening, Ryan, and of course, Celine is a contributing member, and just I asked Ryan to be here to give us sort of an annual update and talk a little bit about what Watts does. So, I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, I really appreciate the invite, Brian. Brian has been sitting on our committee for a couple of years now, ever since Gretchen left us for the greener pastures of a state representative. So, today, I just want to talk a little bit about who Watts, who we are as an agency, what we do, and how you can learn more, stay involved. And again, I can come back, you know, annually, however often you would like me to talk about transportation and the issue. I am curious, how many people are familiar with Watts? All right. It's one of the things that I'm trying to work on, is remedy the fact that many people don't understand what the agency is, and it's really important, because we're talking about transportation policy and transportation investment in Washtenaw County. So, the Washtenaw Area Transportation Study is a multi-jurisdictional government agency in Washtenaw County. It's required by federal law to administer a transportation planning process. We have 22 members. The city of Celine happens to be one of them, and our policy body is made up of elected representatives from each of them. So, it's Brian now, it used to be Representative Driscoll before. We also have a technical committee that makes technical recommendations to that policy committee. The technical committee representative is Gary Robel. He's sat on the Watts technical committee for a long time. I've been there 10 years. You've been there longer than that. And the things that we do are required by the federal government. They think it's so critical to have a regional discussion about transportation policy and investment, that they're willing to fund the agency at 80 percent. So, in our operating budget, 80 percent of that is federal funds. The other 20 percent, for the most part, comes from match, from local communities like the city of Celine. So, we have 22 different members, and Celine has been a member since the agency has been in existence since 1974, and so it's a really strong partnership that we appreciate. What we do, the agency, is prioritize improvements, multimodal improvements. We're not just talking about road improvements, we're talking about bus service funding, bridges non-motorized, which is both pedestrian improvements and bicycle improvements. We're responsible for prioritizing about $6 million per year to those types of improvements. And so, those 22 members get to sit at a table and talk about the best way for us to collaboratively spend that $6 million on transportation improvements in Washtenaw County. So, beyond that, we have a long-range plan, one of our, probably our, primary transportation planning product. The current long-range plan goes out to the year 2040, and we have a funded list of improvements. So, we have an assumption of how much financial resources we'll have through the year 2040, and then we work with all the local communities to come up with a prioritized list of improvements. So, we have some sort of idea on how we plan to be investing these funds all the way through the year 2040. That's a document that we need to update every four years, though. That's the long-term plan. We also have a short-term programming document called the Transportation Improvement Program. That's a four-year document that includes projects in the city of Celine, like the North Ann Arbor Street and the Austin Road project, which is coming up in 2017. So, the city of Celine has about $900,000 of funds coming in the next four or so years in the Transportation Improvement Program. In addition to those required documents, the long-range plan looking out to 2040, the Transportation Improvement Program looking out to 2017, we like to create visionary plans. Those documents are cyclical. We have to do them every four years, but in the interim, when we're not working on developing a new long-range plan or transportation improvement program, we like to focus a little bit more on policy envisioning. And so, the examples of that are a non-motorized plan that we put together in 2006, which a number of you attended meetings for. In 2007, we did a countywide transit plan that led into a lot of the work that the then AATA took on in looking at the potential to expand countywide transit service. And in 2011, we did a complete streets plan, which looks at a more holistic way of planning for, designing, and funding transportation improvements. We also set local transportation policy. The sort of best example that we have of that is allocating 80 percent of those $6 million each year towards roads, 10 percent towards non-motorized improvements, and 10 percent towards transit improvements. And that was a result of the work that we did in the 2006 non-motorized plan, and the elected officials at the policy committee decided that we needed to have a greater emphasis on funding non-motorized improvements. Prior to the 2006 plan, we were only investing about 4 percent of those funds towards non-motorized improvements. Since then, we changed the policy. We've seen a significant increase in the funding that we've put towards non-motorized improvements across the county, urban, suburban, and rural, recognizing that each of those are very different, and the types of improvements, non-motorized improvements, will be very, very different. And so, we're there to facilitate the regional discussion throughout the county. We're involved in a number of different committees at the local level, also at the state level, advocating for the best transportation planning collaborative process that we can do. Another one of the most critical things that we do is public involvement. The agency, in many ways, is there to facilitate public involvement in that transportation planning process. We're allocating and spending $6 million a year in federal funds to our transportation system, and we try to make that information and the process as accessible to the public as possible. And that comes through a series of meetings when we're working on the long-range plan, the transportation improvement program, or one of those visionary products, like a non-motorized plan or a complete streets plan. So, we're always looking for the public to be involved, we're always looking for elected officials to become more involved. We've got a lot of information that's up on our website that talks about the process that we go through, the things that we're required to do, and some of the visionary things that we've worked on in the past. We're also in the process of transitioning to a new website, which makes that information much more approachable. We also have the ability to sign up for email updates. We have a really interesting blog that keeps you up to date on local, state, and national transportation issues. And so, I'd be happy to sort of answer questions now and talk just about the agency, the city of Celine's involvement, or any other questions about transportation issues in the county.
Any questions, Mr. Burgoyne?
In terms of non-motorized, we have some projects that we haven't funded, but we don't have the capacity to fully fund, but maybe could do matching grants. How long would it take for us to apply for funds to get a non-motorized 10-foot-wide path, you know, down a pretty used court?
It depends on ultimately what that funding request would be. It's something that could happen within the next few years. I mean, for example, I don't want to get everyone's hopes up. If you look at 2017, right now, there's about $400,000 or $500,000 allocated towards the Austin Road improvement in the city. So, that's sort of where the city's priority lies as of now, towards the next major improvement. If the city were to decide to spend that money on a non-motorized improvement, done. And so, it's sort of, a big part is the priority of the local community. So, while we've set targets, that 80 percent, 10 percent, 10 percent, that's what we try to shoot for at the regional level, and when I say regional, I'm talking about all of Washtenaw County. But there's still a lot of flexibility for the local community's priorities. So, if that shoots up the list in terms of your transportation priorities, it's something that we can fund.
We actually budget most of our items on a shorter basis, like 12 months, 18 months. We don't usually go four to six years. So, would it be possible to get, let's say, $150,000, just using round figure, within a year or two, or is, are you locked in to plans so far down the road that you don't have flexibility?
So, right now, we're operating under the 2014 to 2017 Transportation Improvement Program. That Transportation Improvement Program gets amended three times a year, and we generally meet annually to make sure that local communities are on track with their projects, that their priorities haven't changed. And so, all that funding is spoken for now, but what actually gets implemented between what's called for now and by the time we actually get to 2017 will likely be different. So, it could. I mean, but again, the biggest chance for that to happen would be for money to come off another city of Celine project. That would be the quickest way to do it. But then, it's talking with your neighbors about that. It's coming together at the policy level and making the point for it as a regional priority. Because that's really, when I talk about the $6 million that we get each year, that's for regional priorities. That doesn't mean that every one of them has to be a big project. It means that we have to decide and prioritize them based on the importance to the region. But, you know, $150,000 for a non-motorized path can certainly be a regional priority.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Gierbaugh?
Speaking of regional priorities, what currently is Watt looking at in terms of Michigan Avenue, because you just mentioned Austin Road, but redoing that intersection at the same time that the state is proposing to do 12, and then having that done beforehand seems a little putting the cart before the horse. But the other aspect is, what are you looking at in terms of an east-west route and other aspects, in terms of potentially paving other roads in the county, so that we have another way to get around our town? Seems like everything's being forced again through 12.
So, is the question about improvements to US 12?
Well, how are you coordinating it? Two things. One, coordinating with US 12 improvements potentially happening in 2018 or farther out, and we do Austin Road beforehand. I just want to make sure we're not doing something that then ends up getting ripped up or changed within a year after. The other question is, what are you doing in terms of trying to help alleviate traffic coming through Celine in terms of an east-west route?
Well, US 12 is owned by our friends at the Michigan Department of Transportation, and they are willing and active partners in the Watts process, but when it comes down to it, what their decision is, in many respects, goes. They have to take their improvements through our committees, but they aren't bound by the same requirements as us. And a good example of that is long-range planning. We ask all of our communities to come up with a prioritized list of improvements through 2040. The Michigan Department of Transportation only comes up with their list for the next five years. And so, a project like US 12, we don't have any idea that, when it might come online. I mean, we just heard a couple weeks ago an announcement that the state's planning to spend $63 million on US 23. We hadn't heard about that until just a couple months ago. And so, their priorities quickly change, which makes it difficult when you're trying to plan alternate east-west routes. So, I am not aware of specific sort of widenings or paved roads, alternate east-west routes in the Transportation Improvement Program or the long-range plan right now.
But if we want to try and move that as a priority, we, as our representatives, should be trying to bring that voice into your sessions, correct?
Yes, and I think that the best way to do that is going to be through the technical committee, either Gary or Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbaugh. Are there additional questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
In Austin Road, you mentioned Austin Road, there's an issue with the light and how transportation moves through that intersection. There's a problem with that. So, who corrects that problem when it's redone?
That would be an MDOT issue. They would be the people that you'd need to talk to as that, when that improvement comes online, although when the Austin Road--
Actually, it's not on Michigan Avenue. The problem is in the trailer park, where they only have one lane coming out, and it butts up against Austin Road, so when the Catholic Church comes out, they can't leave if anybody's coming out of the trailer park. The issue is that there are actually two lanes coming out of there, but they don't use the side lane, because there's no tran, like a transition turn.
Yeah.
So, is that something that would be addressed or not addressed?
It's something that could be, but that's something that would happen at the project level. That's an engineering decision, and that's, we--
Local?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, but that, if it's going out to MDOT, and there's permitting issues, and MDOT would of course have to be involved in those discussions, but they're very, they're really willing partners now. I don't know what your experience has been with MDOT over the course of the last 15 or 20 years. They're a lot better than they were in the past. They're not perfect, but they're better, and they're willing to come have those discussions about something like that.
Any other question? Mr. Roth?
Yes, I heard you say you split your monies, 80 percent for roads, 10 percent for non-motorized. What was the last 10 percent for?
10 percent for transit. And I should clarify that those are targets. They're not, we don't take, we don't take 10 percent off the top or anything like that. It's targets to go towards that. The transit would be for transit capital, so that would be for something like a lead walk that would take you from a sidewalk to a transit stop, a bus shelter, construction like that. We're not talking about operating costs. That's not eligible.
Okay. How, what's your relationship with the RIDE and how they're trying to promote, expand their routes?
We're active partners with them. We actually have a joint unified work program. So, the things that we do and the planning work that they do are in one document that gets approved by the state and then the federal government. When it comes to their specific, the sort of urban core strategy, we are there to help facilitate in any way that we can, but really, that's their decision. And so, I, maybe I don't understand that question.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to come, there's the Watts, and then there's the RIDE, is all for transportation that we're concerned with. And I look as far as the RIDE is, they want to expand it, but it'll be at somebody's dollar, not their dollar, that, at this community, we pay for township, they pay for--
And that's, I think that's, yeah.
And you're providing funds for us to improve the roads and the actual core that we're using. While I'm talking, as far as the roads, the paths and that type, the infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, the RIDE is an operating agency, and we're a planning agency, so there's a lot of additional things that they're responsible for. So, I--
Yeah, you clarified it. In far as the 10 percent that goes in that general direction, what do you use it for? You said the shelters and that type--
Those are examples. The way that we look at it right now, though, is if we construct a non-motorized facility that's on a transit route, we count 50 percent of that cost towards that 10 percent of non-motorized and 10 percent, or, excuse me, 50 percent towards that transit goal.
Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, that's why there's still 80 percent left going towards the roads. You can't have an efficient transit system if you don't have good roads.
I just want to make a couple points. First of all, thank you for being here, Ryan, and taking time out of your schedule to join us and to talk a little bit about Watts. To Ryan's previous point, because there's been comments and questions asked about MDOT and about AATA, both entities have seats at the policy, on the policy committee and communicate actively with participating municipalities and jurisdictions. The other thing Ryan mentioned, the new and improved website, and his staff did a very comprehensive, thorough presentation on the website at our last meeting. I do encourage you all to check it out. It's much more user-friendly, and quite frankly, more aesthetically appealing as well.
But wait 10 days, because it's not up yet.
Not up, excuse me. So, wait 10 days, and then go to the Watts website, because I know that Ryan and myself, as well as a member of the policy committee, would welcome your feedback and your thoughts. There's a lot of good data on there. I think you can sign up for email updates, which I think would be valuable and beneficial to each one of us if you're not signed up already. And of course, those policy committee meetings are open to the public, and so if you're ever interested in learning more about Watts or participating or making a comment for the board, we welcome your attendance and your participation.
And if I may, I really encourage you, as issues come up locally, the example of the trailer park and US 12, when those come up, feel free to give us a call, because we're really good at facilitating those meetings as well. And so, you know, we're there for you. So, don't hesitate, please.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it very much. Good rest of your evening. Okay, next up on the agenda is a presentation regarding HDC website improvements, and I believe we have our DPW director, who also serves as staff liaison, and at least one, maybe a couple members of our HDC. So, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Fordice.
Thank you. The HDC has been actively interested in improving the website for some time, and we recently had a couple of things come together that provided us a good opportunity to make some significant improvements. And, I'm not sure what's going on here.
I'm trying to turn it into a slideshow, Mr. Fordice.
Yes, I am. And what's happening on my screen is not showing up up there at all. And, okay.
You just get a back home. Trolls aren't picking on it. I've never had that trouble with transparencies.
It's upside down, you just flip it around.
We tried it out before.
Right. That's the problem.
Dean and I were just talking about the old technology of transparencies and just putting those on there.
Transparencies are--
Very well.
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities to operate here.
Yes, there was.
Yeah, Chris Schonk was there. He helped. He stepped this up.
Is that it?
That was the problem.
There we go. All right. So, we've been working, thinking, putting some, a lot of thought into how we can make the website a more useful resource for the whole city and for residents of the districts. And one of our commissioners is working on a master's degree, right? And one of her degree requirements and the commission's needs came together quite nicely. So, I'm going to let Commissioner Lori Swick take it from here, and I'll just push the buttons and make this presentation work.
Okay, good. So, good evening, city council members, Mayor Marl. My name's Lori Swick, as Jeff said, and I'd first like to start out by thanking you for allowing me this opportunity to talk about my final project. This was for my master's degree in historic preservation at Eastern Michigan, which I finished in April of this year. And as a historic district commissioner in Celine, my, this idea for my project came along in May of last year, when fellow commissioner Cynthia Christiansen and I, forgive me, my throat is going, were placing signs in the yards of the houses within our local districts as we do for National Preservation Week every year. And as we were doing placing a sign, a woman came up to us who was passing by, and she asked us, "What can you tell me about the history of this house?" So, that started me thinking that maybe more residents in Celine would have the same type of questions. Another gentleman approached me and said, "I didn't even know I lived in a historic district. Where are the boundaries?" So, I started thinking about this more, and I refer to this book, Celine Has A Past And Its Future. You've probably seen this. It was written in 1976 by the first historic district commission, and one of their primary focuses was to have increased public awareness. So, I took that a step further, and I'm thinking that now we can provide a digital avenue for people to learn about our historic resources in Celine with this project. So, Chris Schonk here in the city of Celine and Ted Chesky at Design Hub came up with, helped me formulate the maps and came up with link placements. So, what we would have on our main webpage for the historic district commission, this would actually be a link, the city of Celine local historic districts, and there are three, and each one's a different color. So, a user could come in and say, pick on North Ann Arbor Street or whatever, and if they pick on that color, well, in this case, it's West Henry Street, but they pick on that color and they can see the individual structures that are in that district come up. And then, they can take that even a step further and pick on an individual square, and up would come the information on that particular house. And basically, it's just going to give an architectural description, very brief, some of the history of the house, and then some sources that they could reference as well. In some cases, I just have one picture, which, these are all recent pictures, and in other cases, I show historic pictures alongside, so people can see how the, how the house has changed over the years. So, but must, much of my written portion was done using previous documentation from the 1994 survey by Koski and Glenn that was done, and also study committee reports, and then I supplemented my own research as well. So, so I'm hoping that this will bring some excitement, and people can finally know about, you know, our districts and the great resources that we have. The Historic District Commission has approved this project to be on our webpage, so I'm asking for city council's approval as well. And this is just really the first step, and we plan, as a commission, to put on other links that will be great resources for homeowners. So, that's--
Thank you, Lori.
Sure.
So, yeah, after we get this part done, as Lori mentioned, we want to put up some more, some links to resources. Most of those will be targeted for residents in the districts. There'll be some information about the rules and techniques that are permissible for renovations within the district, and then also some how-to links. There's some really good information out there about how to fix windows, how to maintain a stone foundation, things like that, that, you know, a handy homeowner can do, or if you're not handy, you know, know what your contractor should be doing, so.
Right. And also a guideline for the Secretary of Interior Standards, I think, is important as we go off those guidelines, and a link to the SHIPPO office, the state historic preservation office. Office as well, which provides a multitude of resources for homeowners. So, it's just beginning, but I think it's exciting.
Well, if I may, unless, well, not a question, more of a, more of a comment, really. This is excellent work, and I'm very pleased that your, your master degree requirement, I forget how Mr. Fordice articulated it, but the stars kind of aligned here. And you had a need, and we certainly had a need. And I think this is a very valuable resource, and so I commend you and the HDC for your leadership on this front. My only question would be, I'm assuming that there'll be some sort of internal mechanism by which this page on our city's website is sort of reviewed on an annual basis, just to make sure it's current and up to date?
Yes, yes. And also, I think, I can see this growing as perhaps another district would come in.
Right.
We could keep adding to this.
Right.
And it could just become better and better.
Okay. No, but I think it's, I think it's great, and I applaud you for your efforts. I think it's wonderful. And this actually, the motion to accept and approve is on the consent agenda this evening. So, I don't suspect there'll be any opposition, but you'll be able to determine that in just a few moments. Are there additional comments or questions? Mr. Rhodes?
Just wanted to say that I fully support this effort. It's something that we had briefly talked about many years ago when I was on Historic District Commission, and I'm glad to see it come to fruition. And it's always a good idea to get more information out to the hands of our residents. One of the things that occurred to me while you were talking, within HDC, we get requests for projects within the historic districts that are approved based on the data that's submitted. But I don't think we ever get any feedback, HDC ever gets any feedback, when that job is actually finished. And I was thinking like this addition on South Ann Arbor Street that was done not very long ago. Might be nice to have some after photos, and even make that a requirement of a submittal, if it's the kind of thing that could photograph. And then perhaps have some of those examples on the webpage of before and an after of something that was done to a building in a historic district.
Yeah, a post-project feedback inspection is something that we've been talking about a little bit, both from an information point of view, like you're saying, but also from a compliance point of view, that they actually did the work that, in the way that it was approved, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mayor Protem Tihar, your question?
Yes, question. Well, first comment, this looks great, and I, I think it's a great resource, and I, I'm happy to see some, an additional inf, attraction being added to the city's website for, for the citizens of the community. And then the question, comment plus question is, you probably are aware that the library has online lots of historic photos and historic information about many of the structures that are in the historic district. Is that going to be or already included here in some way?
Yes. And it was kind of funny how this happened. And when I was thinking of this project, and I went to find some of the surveys and some of the documentation, it so happened that Leslie Neathammer at the library was, had this same idea in mind to get more public awareness about not just the buildings in our historic districts, the local historic districts, but all of the ones that were done in the survey back in 94, which were over 300 structures. So, what is on the website for the library is from the 1994 survey.
Right.
So, and the copyright of those pictures is owned by the city of Saline, and I do make note of that where I did use those pictures. So...
But, yeah, linking over to that site from here will be one of the, one of the extra bits of information that we add in there.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Mr. Gerebo.
Just real quick, one of the things, too, that we're looking at is potentially expanding this as part of a walking tour, but actually, when we have the historic, there's the ability to make a scan, I don't know what they're called.
QR code.
QR code, whatever, and place it on a sign that's associated with the house, so that if somebody goes by, can scan it with their smartphone device and be able to look it up and do that. So, we can expand and try and produce a way of getting more people walking the community during that week and basically getting an idea of what it is. So, I think there's a lot of aspects that we can, to adapt to this, so it'll allow us to have some more ways of bringing people into Saline to actually experience the city. So, this is great. And Lori did do an incredible job, and Cynthia's help and assistance, and it is, it's the lining of the stars, because this wouldn't have happened with her going for her master. So, this is the benefit of a lot of our people in town. When they come forward with these type of projects, we benefit greatly. So, whenever this happens, we encourage everyone to come forward.
Mr. Peters?
Congratulations on your master. Are you still working towards that, or are you?
I finished.
You know, good for you. That's, that's quite an accomplishment. I think it's great that in the future, you plan to put on some rules and regulations for homeowners in the district. I'm sure that'll save some misunderstandings in the future.
I agree.
Anything else? Thank you again. Appreciate you being here this evening. Cynthia, thank you for coming as well. Jeff, appreciate it. Okay, we come now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any public comments?
No.
No? Then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Move to approve as submitted.
The move to approve as submitted by Councilmember Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Discussion. Mr. Burgoyne.
Regarding item 13-191, which is the annual report for TIFA and also LDFA and HDC, we usually also get the budgets at this time. When are we getting the budgets? When are those coming?
I believe shortly.
Next meeting. Okay.
Maybe, I'm not sure if it's next meeting or shortly.
If it's not at our next meeting, Mr. Burgoyne, we will, we will communicate that to you in advance.
No, no, I'm, I'm okay.
You're good?
I don't need it.
All right. So, it's been properly moved by Mr. Rhodes and seconded by Roth to approve the consent agenda as submitted. There's no additional discussion. I hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business, item 13-192. This is Tetra Tech Change Order Number One. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the Tetra Tech Change Order Number One in the amount of $20,492. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes to approve, seconded by Councilmember Peters. We have our city superintendent, Mr. Ruble, here this evening, as well as two guests from Tetra Tech, and I'll turn the floor over to you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mr. Brian Ruble is here representing Tetra Tech, as well as Tom Alba, who was a lead design engineer. And my, my cover letter expresses the financial status of the project to date on the, on the construction phase. In the, in the past, we reviewed the study phase and then the design phase, and we've gotten by that, and the SAW grant and the S2 phase. Now, we're in the construction phase. So, as you can see, there are two agreements under the current budget. One's the engineering design, or the engineering construction services agreement of $135,000. The contract with FHC, which is Franklin, a water company, was bid at $1.276 million, which was, which was a good bid compared to other bids we received. So, the total, then, of the two agreements comes to $1,417,000. The FY14 budget contains $1,500,000, and therefore, we have what is a difference, is considered to be $89,000 in contingencies. Now, virtually every project has contingencies, unless you're buying a known product, like a generator or a truck, at a known cost. But virtually all our construction projects deal with so many variable parts, quantities, you know, things you find during construction, that you always have a contingencies budget to deal with these things that come up. You, some, could be impacted by the weather, a number of other factors. And so, we have an $89,000 contingencies. Also, normally, in construction projects, of course, is getting, is making adjustments. Sometimes we do it at the end, we call it a balancing change order, and you have all your increases and decreases balanced off at one time. Some cases, we, we bring them in, in groups, as we're doing tonight. We did that during our past projects, you know, the DPW Building, City Hall, the water treatment plant, all had numerous change orders due to the ongoing activities of the project and things that impacted it. Substitutions, alternates, you know, using some better products or maybe ways of saving, saving money by performing some engineering economy. Now, certainly, we've got a little bit of, of all of those on, on the first change order here for the wastewater rehabilitation project. And although it's not as significant as their change orders of many past projects, we decided that with these, these four items, some of which, item four is three parts, that we'd bring this to council now, because we want to, the contractor would like to proceed and know that these items have been approved, so he can make progress on doing the reconstruction, the installation of the equipment, and so forth. And then we can also make payments in a timely manner per our contract agreement with the contractor. And so, I, I drafted a cover page, because I know that financial status is a very important ingredient, as far as city council and staff are concerned. We monitor projects closely, make sure we're on track, and according to what we budgeted here and what we planned, we are on track, and we are spending a small amount of the contingencies. And I don't expect there will be any large amount of contingencies in the next change, or a large amount of change orders coming up, maybe some, also some small items. So, with that, overall, the contingency spending here is 1.6 percent, only represents a 1.6 percent change in, as compared to the contract amounts, only 1 percent, 1.6 percent increase overall. I know Tetra Tech worked very hard, their, their inspector worked very hard also, dealing with the contractors' request on these items, and we're able to negotiate a fair, a fair and equitable figure to get it in the format that you see tonight. And so, everything's been going well on the project. Tetra Tech performed well, contractors performed well. And so, we bring it to you this evening for the disposition of first change order. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ruble? Mr. Roth?
I have a question in regards, change order number one, item three, proposed request C, changes to the mixer demolition. Why are we not going to dispose of it properly at this time? Can I look at that as, the whole plant down there has a lot of stuff that's been left from unfinished, from projects before, so it's collecting like a junkyard.
This is not a...
It's going to cost us a lot more money to clean it up.
It's, it's not an interior feature, I believe. I mean, most of it will be disposed of. It's just that the, there's a vault that's outside the building that would be very, would be more costly to dig outside the building and interfere with not only the building itself on the outside, but disturb a large ground area. It's sort of like banning, it's, it's going to be abandoned in place, sealed off. All the, all the basic stuff is going to be removed first and then sealed off. So, it's sort of like what they do with houses when they abandon, when they tear down houses and they tear them down a certain distance, and they ban then the, what remains of the basement in place.
But we have a lot of abandoned stuff out there that's cluttering the facility.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if this is a wise move.
It'd be underground and buried. It'd be less obtrusive, less intrusive to abandon in place than form of, more extensive and area impacting removal.
If I, if I may.
Please.
Just, it will, and I think Mr. Ruble just mentioned this, that it will be, the banning in place is going to be below grade, so it's not going to be sticking up above. So, we just wanted to make that clear.
We, we do that on a lot of projects. Manholes are banned in place, catch basins, whether it isn't feasible or, isn't feasible or economically viable to do extensive removal and disruption of, of the grounds and tearing out extra curbs and tearing out other things around it. So, you save money and it's properly abandoned.
Okay, just say this. When, on our visit that we took out there more than a year ago, to look at the facility, we discovered a lot of abandoned things that hasn't been really cleaned up or taken care of. I didn't want to have more junk and more things, because there's no cheaper time than the present to take care of it.
This, it's not one of those cases where it's quick.
Do you have a follow-up question, Mr. Roth?
No, that, that's it. Can I just say is?
Nope.
I'd like to see that area cleaned up, so we can expand in the future.
Absolutely.
Without having additional expenses, and I hope that was, been a part of this whole project.
Very good. Point is well taken. Thank you. Was there a question on this side of the dais, Mr. Burgoyne?
No.
Oh, Ms. Tihar, excuse me.
Well, I, I was also concerned about item number three, but my question was a little bit different. And that is, does abandoning this item in place now create potential problems for us down the road that will have to be remediated in some way?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, we, we do it on our street projects quite frequently, on manholes and catch basins. And if we do expand in the future, you know, you'd have to, you'd be removing the whole digester. And this is very small compared to the whole digester. It's just a small structure outside a digester. It's not a large structure.
Okay.
One scoop, basically.
Anything further, Ms. Tihar? No?
No, thank you.
Mr. Burgoyne?
This isn't about the points that you list here, but I'm thinking in terms of this project, I've forgotten if you've given us this information. This is about 1.5 million. We have about $4 million worth of projects overall. When you get done, let's say in three years, with these construction projects, will there be a better efficiency of the plant? Will they maybe have 3% more throughput, or what's the end result after all of these, you know, about 4 million, whatever the investment is? What's the end result? Is there a little bit more capacity out of there? Are we more efficient?
Well, we, we should be. We just can't measure it, because it has, it really depends on how the chemistry works when all these new things come into effect, because the plant is basically made up of biological activity. And certainly, with, with the digester, with the, with the new heating system in the digester, Tom will give you all the scientific stuff, but the digester wasn't working properly at all. It was pretty, pretty well dilapidated. But when you get the proper environment for the bacteria to reduce the sewage down into inert form for land application, it becomes much more efficient. And so, when you make your digestive process efficient, then, then you can, you can treat more. We just can't measure it yet, because it has to work through a couple of cycles.
And if I might just...
Please, Tom.
To expand on what Gary said. It's a good question. This project is primarily about reliability. And we discuss these things. The, there, there are some kind of incidental, maybe increases in capacity, but not the kinds of things that you can measure. But you've got, you've got quite a bit invested in that facility over a long period of time. And, and these current investments are to make sure that, that overall facility continues to be reliable. And as we talked about before, the requirements for operating that place are 365 days a year to meet permit limits, and this helps ensure that the operators have the wherewithal to be able to do that without things breaking and causing them to fail in that manner. So, so that, that was the real thrust. And, and subsequent projects, I don't, I don't think they add up to quite that much money, but they, but, that continues to be the thrust up until the point where a measurable increase in capacity is required. thrust up until the point where a measurable increase in capacity is required, and, and then that's kind of a different series of projects at that point in time.
So the normal, the nominal throughput, let's say it's 2 million gallons a day or whatever it is, that won't change? That won't change to 2.05 or?
Not, not as a result of this, no.
Okay.
For the questions, Mr. Rose?
I don't have any questions on this change order, but I was wondering if we could get some progress photos periodically, because it's not really a site that's available to us, and we shouldn't be in there wandering around anyway. I think if we get progress photos, it might also help when these change order issues come up.
We can proceed in that direction without objection. Mr. Campbell will communicate that to Mr. Skoll, and I think that would be, be appropriate and helpful. Thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Rose. Tom, please.
Well, just one, one other thought, which is somewhat related also, is, as you will recall, when we talked about this, there was another issue at the treatment plant that was evaluated in a study and, and, and kind of relegated for further investigation, and that was cracks that, that had appeared, or, or movement of some of the buildings. And we've been monitoring the cracks with, with SME, who is a geotechnical consultant, and as of right now, what we've been able to determine is that, that in all likelihood, the movement that has been observed occurred before we began to monitor, and, and that so far, we've not really determined any additional movement. So we're, we're gonna continue to monitor and continue to take photographs and, and continue to look at this for a bit longer, but, but as of the moment, we hope to be able to come back and say that repairing the cracks that are there to make the buildings weather tight and stuff like that makes good sense, but, but some kind of costly and previously undefined significant structural repair doesn't appear to be indicated, at least right now, so I thought you guys-
Appreciate the update on that front, Tom. Any other questions for either Mr. Rubel or our guests from Tetra Tech? Brian, did you care to make any comment this evening?
No.
Okay. Very good. Okay. If there are no additional questions, are there any, is there any discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Peters to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you both for being here this evening. Appreciate it very much. We move on now to new business item 13-194. This is the Celine Rec Center Rules and Procedures. This will be a motion to acknowledge the memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs and to approve or not to approve the updated Celine Rec Center rules and policies as submitted. Is there a motion?
I'm moved to acknowledge the memo.
Okay, we'll start with a motion to acknowledge the memo, and that has been moved by Mr. Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. And I should just note before I turn the floor over to Director Scruggs, and I don't know if it came from your office, Ms. Scruggs, or whether it came from our city clerk, but you should have all received this supplemental sometime during the mid-part of last week, which includes the rule changes, and this is basically a redlined edition, so you can see the old policies and then what's being recommended. Okay? I apologize. Ms. Scruggs, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The rules and policies are a guideline that we put together quite some time ago, and with the changes that we have coming for this January, we took this opportunity to clean it up a little bit, to make the, we're, we're using different terms. Instead of patron, we're using guest. So a lot of it is just housekeeping things, trying to make it more succinct, and we really haven't changed the, the, this document whatsoever. We have added, like I said, the out, the new hours of operation, we've added language regarding the family, what constitutes a family, our resident changes, and also put in language referencing the recurring, recurring billing, the new methods for payment. Also, we took that, like I said, we took this opportunity to add in some of the new additional rules that we have in, in our aquatic center. We now have an inflatable turtle, an inflatable pirate ship, and we have rules that are associated with the use of those, so we, we put that into this rules and policies as well. And after this is approved with whatever changes you might have, or, or suggestions, what we plan to do is put together a member handbook, kind of taking out specifics for the members, and then have another rules and policies pamphlet that people can pick up. But for our new mem, or for, for all the members, when they, when they join, they get like a new member packet that has, you know, pertinent information, and that would go into that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to-
Yeah, we may have a number of, of questions and comments, and let me first thank you for being here, and also thank you and your staff, because this process looks exhausting. But, but it was important considering the policy changes that were-
Sure.
-implemented or approved, excuse me, at our, at our last council meeting. So I want to thank you for your work on this, and I assume there are a number of comments and questions, so I'll, I'll open it up for, for any thoughts you may have. Mr. Girba, did you, did you want to start as the mover of this motion? Did you have any?
I just made a memo to get the discussion moving.
Okay. Mr. Tahar, did you have any questions? No? All right, then, Mr. Burgoyne, I believe you do.
Well, I actually have a, a comment. I think this, this body, the city council, should approve some things that had to do with the rec center, but at some level, I think the city administrator and the facility administrator should take care, should review with legal, legal counsel and maybe give a draft review copy to us, but I, I think at, at some point, we shouldn't just get into the day-to-day operations. I, I, I think this is, this should be at the staff level, I think. I mean, it'd be okay for us to get a review copy in our box and not take action for a week until they get comments or something, but I, I don't, this doesn't seem like overall policy to me.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne, and, you know, generally, my, my response to that would be that your com, your comments are, are appropriate and legitimate, that, you know, council should avoid engaging or directing staff as it relates to operational responsibilities, but the type of policy changes and, and rule changes that are being recommended this evening, as my previous comments may have indicated, are sort of profound in nature, and it's, you're doing, you're recommending a lot of changes, which I think are, are good and positive, and I'm supportive of, but I, I think there is an important role for, for council to play in engaging in this discussion and dialogue and making any recommended changes that, that individuals seem fit. So I, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Burgoyne, and generally, I would agree, but I, I'm not sure that I do as it relates to this particular motion, this particular item specifically. Mr. Rose?
Couple things. One is, when I received this last week, I could not open the attachments on my computer that I have at home, running XP, it wouldn't recognize the attachment, so I wasn't able to open them until I got to my office this morning and started trying to review them in and install the other things that I have to do at work to make a living, so I did not get through the whole thing. And so I don't know if it's critical that we approve these this evening, or if we might have time to actually take this marked-up copy and, and look through it, and then review it the next time when our next, or another document comes from the rec center.
You have, do you have any objections to, obviously, there's a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt, which we will, will entertain when the, the discussion ends. Would you have any problem if council waited and took official action at our subsequent meeting in two weeks?
No. That would leave us plenty of time. We, we need to, we're preparing for January, so we would just need enough time, which December 16th, I believe, is the next meeting.
Two weeks from today.
We should have plenty of time to put these together for our, our new member packets and whatnot. And it, this, this is difficult to, to go through. It, it really is. And like I said, the, the things, the pertinent changes were the, the policies and the, and the things that you approved at, at our last meeting, hours of operation, our family definition, our, our resident definition. Those were the, the major highlights for, for any of these changes in here. You, we, we changed wording here and there, we tried to clean up sentences, so, so it was a lot more direct and more succinct. So as you review this over the next week or so, I mean, feel free to shoot me an email and I can clarify whatever questions you might have.
Mr. Rose?
As far as I did get through it, one, one thing that struck me a little odd, and this is not even anything that was changed, and so it's on page four, A15, there are two age requirements within that same paragraph. One is that children 10 years of age or older, and then children under 12 years of age are not allowed to do certain things. And it seems like those ages are really close together, and I wonder if it might be possible to just make that an age that would apply to both of those sentences?
We do, the, the ages are, if you're 10 or older, you can come into the rec center by yourself without parent supervision. The 12 to 15-year age, if, if they take a, a special class that we offer and pass it, then they're allowed to use the cardio equipment in the weight room. Otherwise, they cannot be up there without parent supervision, or they can't be up there at all until they're at least 16.
I'm just thinking of the difficulty of trying to administer that when those ages are so close together.
It's, it's not terrible. We, we've done it for a long time. That, that was what our city council back in the day had approved for, for 10 and, and older to be in the building by themselves, which I think is a very good age. We, we're, we're getting some young kids coming in to shoot baskets with their buddies or whatnot, and it's good. I don't think, if we allowed, said you can't come in until you're 12, I think that's kind of pushing what the rec center is all about.
Okay, if you're fine with it, I'm okay with it.
Well, let's proceed in this direction unless there are objections. Needless to say, this has been commented on by Director Scruggs as well as myself. There are a lot of changes in this rules and policy handbook, most of which are not going to surprise you, because they directly correlate with the, the changes that we made at our last meeting. However, because of the magnitude and, and the number of changes, I, I think there is some legitimacy in giving you a couple weeks to review it. Obviously, if you have any questions or concerns, staff would welcome emails or phone calls from you, but let's be of the assumption and be prepared to discuss this thoroughly and then hopefully adopt the changes at our subsequent meeting on December 16th. Mr. Girba?
Just quick clarification. Was this reviewed by our general counsel?
No.
Has it ever been?
Yes. The, the original was reviewed by our city attorney.
Oh, which one?
The-
Former?
The former, because the last time that they were reviewed and updated was 2007.
Probably wouldn't hurt to send a copy to, to-
Just because there's some issues in there about what a wearable and what you can wear and this term obscene versus offensive, I just want to make sure we cover ourselves on that.
I'm assuming that can be completed between now and December 16th. That's a good suggestion, Mr. Girba. Okay. Any other comments? No? Okay. Ms. Scruggs, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Is there any further discussion on the motion, which is simply to acknowledge receipt this evening? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Move on to our final action item of the evening, which is new business item 13-195. This is a resolution to amend the Celine Area Fire Department Agreement. This will be a motion to adopt or not to adopt the resolution to amend the SAFD agreement as submitted.
Motion to adopt.
Moved by Burgoyne to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. Any discussion? I'd just make one quick comment. This is, I believe, the second time that you all are seeing this, this document. As board chair, I feel obligated to make just a brief statement, which is that what's being proposed as, as amendments are pretty minor housekeeping things, specifically related to the at-large position that we have on the fireboard, which hasn't existed for that many years, I think 2006, 2007, and that position is really key, it's really integral, because prior to the creation of that spot, we had an eight-member board with eight voting members. So there were occasions where there were, there were ties, and those, those were difficult to, to resolve. So having a, a competent, objective, at-large member who's not directly tied to one of the governing boards that, that make up the executive board of the Celine Area Fire Department is really, really key. So after a number of conversations and after review by our legal counsel, the board accepted or approved these changes, and now it's, it's up to each of the participating municipalities to also approve the changes. Mr. Peters also sits on the fireboard, or if you have anything to, to add, Mr. Peters?
No, it's a, it's a well-thought-out document, and really no surprises.
Is there any discussion? No? Okay, then we proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Move on to discussion items. First up, we have commission, committee, or task force reports. Mr. Rose?
The environmental commission met on November the 20th. We had two primary items on our agenda. The first one had to do with a presentation about lead and green globes, the two energy and environmental improvement criteria that are generally available out there for construction of primarily commercial buildings and improvements to them. The purpose of that discussion was so that we could make a recommendation back to the special projects committee on whether or not they should adjust the IFT guidelines to allow for credits for developments that met the lead and the green globes, and we did so resolve and have prepared that resolution, that recommendation, which I assume has been forwarded to special projects.
I believe will be considered at their upcoming meeting.
Very good, thank you. And the second item had to do with the waste management contract, proposed new one, and I won't comment on that, because Mr. Fordyce has prepared a, a document that we're gonna be reviewing shortly.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rose. There additional commission or committee, task force reports? No? Then we move on to reports and other announcements. Just a reminder, we have our second strategic planning session this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at Liberty School, and I sent you all, I believe, this, this weekend, a forwarded message from Bob Krasinski from our very own American Legion post here in town, and they are hosting a fundraising breakfast in honor of the anniversary of Pearl Harbor this Saturday at the American Legion Post. I believe it runs from about 8:00 to 11:00. Obviously, we will all be tied up and engaged in, in one of our responsibilities as council members for most of that period, but if your schedule permits and you want to swing by between 8:00 and 9:00, I know the, the folks at the American Legion post would be greatly appreciative. And then finally, I wanted to invite you all to participate in the Christmas Holiday Parade, which is also this Saturday. Lineup is by Robinson-Bomner Funeral Home at Michigan Ave in Davenport. And does the parade kick off at?
5:30.
5:30. So I think the email that I received from Mary Alice asked us to gather around 5:00 o'clock. So if you are interested in your schedule permits, I would welcome your participation. Are there any other announcements? Mr. Girba?
And I believe the lighting of the tree is Friday night?
Excuse me, yes.
7:00.
Right, four corners there. So not in the center of the four corners, of course, but in that vicinity. Thank you, Mr. Girba. If there are no other announcements, then we'll move on to the water moratorium discussion. Jeff, I'm gonna ask you to come forward. Mr. Fordyce prepared an informative memorandum dated December 2nd of 2013 regarding the water moratorium issue that Mr. Peters brought up at our last council meeting. After I turn the floor over to Jeff, I'll entertain and welcome your questions, and then what I'm looking for is whether there is a consensus to, to change the policy or to leave intact the current policy, which I believe was adopted either in late 2011 or, or sometime in, in 2012. Okay? Mr. Fordyce?
Thank you. What I've presented here is the, the last three years of what we call wholesale water sales, or contractor water sales. These are sales of water that are either delivered through a fire hydrant, a metered fire hydrant, or a tap we have out at the DPW yard. And so they're, they're laid out there in that graph, and then in the paragraphs at the bottom, I sum up which of those are related to oil exploration. And my understanding from conversations with these contractors is that they were for exploratory drilling and drilling of- drilling and drilling of production wells, standard oil wells, not fracking. But that total is four hundred thirty-four, almost four hundred thirty-five thousand gallons over the three years, with a total revenue of twenty-eight ninety-eight. The other sales not oil-related totaled sixty thousand one hundred seventy-five gallons for revenue of a hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The initial moratorium, which ceased all water sales, was April sixteenth, 2012, so that's just after all of those FY-12 sales. And then that was modified in August of 2012 to resume water sales for projects that are taking place within the city limits, and that's what we're operating under right now. We only sell water for projects within the city limits.
Thank you, Mr. Fordyce. Are there any questions for DPW Director Fordyce? Mr. Burgoyne?
In terms of efficiency of water sales, water sales that go to a business or a home have a meter and it's periodically metered, there's no other task connected. Are there any tasks connected or any time consumption of any type connected with this allowing water this way?
Yeah, there are, and it varies from sale to sale. We don't have a dedicated meter dispensing point, so depending on the project, we will install a meter on a hydrant. And what we've been doing lately is installing that meter at an accessible hydrant at the DPW facility. In the past, we've put it out close to the project site, but in order to keep an eye on things and monitor the hydrant use lately, we've been just setting it up at the DPW. So that reduces the labor a little bit, but it's still, per project, we've got to go out and attach the backflow preventer, attach the water meter, you know, prop it all up and have it established. That's for large volume sales. For smaller volume sales, we do have a yard hydrant, and we'll just fill from there. But it does, it takes time, staff time. You know, the long-term sales require my review and a permit to use the hydrant, but there are fees built in. There's a twenty-five dollar administration fee for all hydrant use, so that's designed to cover that a little bit of time, and then we bill for the water itself. I should note that in the next fee book, these, I'll be recommending an increase in these fees.
Please, Mr. Burgoyne.
Well, in the audit, we saw that water sales had surplus revenues of five hundred and fifty thousand, and I can't remember what the overall revenues were, but something like two million. So two thousand dollars doesn't seem like a lot of cost against the total water revenues. And also, when we sell this water, we pay for the production and so forth of water, so we have a cost, and we have an extra labor, it's an extra task, tasking kind of cost. So I'm not favorable to changing this moratorium. I just soon leave it the way it is and just sell to inside the city. I can't really see any benefit to us of selling outside the city like this.
Okay. Were there additional questions? Mr. Peters?
I just want, if, you know, if a farmer or contractor outside city limits wants to buy water, why not sell it to them? I mean, why say no to revenue? I don't understand. And also, a moratorium generally has an end date associated with this. This is kind of open-ended. But why would you say no to revenue to the city to sell water to a legal licensed contractor?
Any other questions?
I don't understand.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Fordyce? No? Okay, so, oh, a question, Mr. Tahr, excuse me.
Thank you. So for this FY-12 and FY-11, the other customers, Shoncheck, Shade and Sun, and Jackson, were those inside the city limit or out of the city limit? Do you know?
Jackson was, and Shoncheck was. I'm not certain about the Sun and Shade.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, actually, let's start at the opposite end of the dais. So usually, I'm always putting Mr. Roth and Mr. Girba on the spot first, but we can actually probably move along fairly easily because Mr. Burgoyne has already articulated a position, which is that he would like the current policy to remain intact. Mr. Peters obviously feels differently and would like to see a policy change. Mr. Tahr, do you have an opinion on this?
Yes, I do. I'd like to keep what we have in place now, and I think I agree complete with Mr. Burgoyne's reasoning.
Okay. I would agree with the sentiments already articulated by Mr. Burgoyne and those that apparently are shared by Mr. Tahr. I also favor keeping the current policy intact. Mr. Rose?
My opinion is more in line with Councilmember Peters. If there's a legitimate request for water use by a contractor or a non-resident on a periodic bulk basis, I don't see why we should say no to them. And to the point that twenty-eight hundred dollars worth of revenue doesn't seem like very much with a half million or so surplus, the, whatever that half million or so was, was generated from individual homeowners for the most part, at a hundred and sixty dollars or a hundred and seventy dollars or whatever, so I'm not sure how that relates. The other comment that I wanted to make, given all of the steps that Mr. Fordyce described that are necessary in order to satisfy a request for in-town water use for setting the meter and backflow preventer and all that, that twenty-five dollar fee doesn't seem to come even close to even taking care of your time administratively, let alone out in the field and doing everything else. So I'd strongly support that fee increase, whatever that turns out to be.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Mr. Girba?
My thing is, if we could have been selective, I think we would have continued to sell water, but since we can't be selective and not be treating people unequally, I can't continue to support an idea that would allow us to give water to somebody that potentially is contaminating our water aquifers or potentially destroying our precious, few our precious water reserves that we have around this area. So I think as a former citizen or a citizen of Salina, as mentioned before, sometimes making just that point needs to be made.
So, Mr. Girba, you're in favor of the current policy?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Roth?
I'm in favor of what we're doing currently.
Okay.
And if it's necessary, I would say make it not a moratorium. This is the way we do business.
So, staff, feel comfortable with the consensus from the dais?
I do. I believe Jeff does, but I would suggest, in reference to Mr. Peters, about a moratorium, typically you have an end date. So if the consensus was to maintain the current policy to potentially formalize that...
I think that would be appropriate, so whatever steps need to be taken. I also think that there's merit in, you know, maybe in a year's time, Jeff, you did a very nice, a very helpful analysis, and maybe come back and, you know, I'm certainly not unwilling in the future to look at this policy to see if there's an opportunity to tweak it or adjust it. Just my opinion is for the current foreseeable future, I think that the current policy is appropriate, but, you know, if you have contacts from vendors or a new insight that may lend itself to adjusting this policy somewhat, I think we would welcome, you know, hearing that.
Okay.
Very good. Please.
Mr. Mary, it's for direction, so do we just status quo with the moratorium, or do you want to move towards a more official ordinance type or...
Well, I think Mr. Roth articulated that he would like to see the verbiage moratorium removed because it implies something finite, not permanent. I'm assuming, Mr. Girba, you agree with that? Okay. I would agree with that. Everybody pretty much in agreement on that?
I would agree with it if you increase the fees as, you know, to more match the cost.
Right, and I think as Mr. Fordyce indicated, that's forthcoming anyways. So, yeah, okay.
Very good.
Feel like you have consensus now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Mr. Fordyce, appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Actually, you've got to stay up here, because now we're going to move on to the Waste Management proposed contract extension.
Okay. I have Pat Greavy here from Waste Management with me tonight. So we are nearing the end of our most recent contract with Waste Management, and per the terms of the contract, staff met with Waste Management two hundred and seventy days prior to the end of it, and if we're going to do an extension, current contract calls for that to be enacted a hundred and eighty days prior to the end of our current contract. This contract ends June thirtieth, 2014, so a hundred and eighty days prior to that is January one. So I wanted to bring it tonight as a discussion item to look at the scope of services that we're proposing and give you guys some time to digest the material because it is one of our larger city contracts. So what we started with was just a discussion on what we'd like about what's going on and some areas where we would like to see some improvements, some areas where citizens have called in with questions about how do I get rid of this, what can I do with this, and can we roll those kind of requests into our service plan? And one of the big items that has been discussed a fair amount with, within staff and within the environmental commission is our recycling rate. In the memo, I refer to it as the diversion rate, and these numbers here include not only materials that go on for recycling, but any material that is picked up by Waste Management but doesn't go to a landfill. So it includes yard waste in there as well. That's been declining over the past three years. There's, you know, we can't, we haven't figured out exactly why. There's, you know, there are some other recycling options out there now, so it's possible that items that used to go on the curb are now going to a scrap facility or going to one of the county pickups or cleanup day. But the feeling is that it just needs to be more convenient. So, and in discussions with Waste Management, their most accessible way to increase recycling is to provide a larger container. And so we've looked at that, and that's the current recommendation, is to switch from our eighteen-gallon little totes to ninety-six-gallon curb carts, which are the same size as the available trash curb cart. And that would change from a weekly service to an every-other-week service. So we'd have some gains, we'd have gains in capacity, and we'd have some gains in efficiency because we'd have trucks coming through less frequently. Trash would still be every week, but then the recycling trucks would only come to each house every other week. And I think everybody can see the difficulty in scheduling that, and, you know, you see every time we have a holiday, there's kind of a random collection of trash cans out on the curb for three days, and it takes a little while to catch up. It is difficult to enact. I think your experience has been there's a couple months of chaos, and...
Be a strong word.
Recycling chaos. And then people get it. You know, so it takes a little while. There would have to be an education effort along with that, and, you know, we can post the maps and schedules on the website and get that information out there. But the main point of that is to increase recycling and to reduce the number of trips of trucks coming through town. Some other changes to the single-family home service is some addition to the yard waste program. Currently, the yard waste program is limited to yard waste, grass, leaves, twigs, but we wanted to add kind of a composting element for folks who want to keep their compostable material out of landfills but don't want to actually do composting themselves. So fruit and vegetable waste would be allowed in the yard waste collection. Another request that I've gotten several times is for larger woody debris. The yard waste program currently allows for bundled four-foot sections of branches under six inches, or under four inches, sorry. This new service would be a call-ahead service, but there wouldn't be an additional fee. They would come and pick up branches up to eight feet long and six inches in diameter. And then, a lot of people still miss the spring cleanup, but that became a very expensive disposal method. But what we have proposed in this is a one bulk item per week per residence without a call-ahead, right, without a call-ahead? Yes. And no fee. Currently, a bulk pickup item, you have to call ahead, pay a ten-dollar fee, and then they come and pick it up. And I would note that freon-containing bulk items would still be a call-ahead, and there'd be a thirty-dollar disposal fee on those. So that's the, those are the changes, and all those changes are in the single-family residential portion of the program. The commercial program, those items are summarized in the attached chart. Those are all proposed to stay the same, as well as the community event support that Waste Management provides. They provide, uh, container service for the downtown festivals, and they provide extensive container and labor for Celtic Festival, and a couple other events, like the pumpkin roll and the twenty-four-hour reading, right? Thank you. So, and the cost proposal is to hold this year's pricing for the first year of the new contract, and then there'd be a CPI adjustment factor in there, which is the same as what we have in the current contract. And we are proposing a five-year extension.
Very good. We'll start with Mr. Girba.
Jeff, what's been the trend on our overall trash collection, going up, going down?
The, I didn't bring the volume numbers with me, but they, I think, over the past three years have been reasonably steady, not a big drop. I think there was, I think from eleven to twelve, or, I'm sorry, ten to eleven, there was a drop, and then I think it picked up a little bit in twelve, and obviously, we don't have the thirteen number yet.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, it seems so complicated to me, and I don't like complicated things, and I think there's, there are people out there who don't like complicated things. Right now, not everyone puts out their recycled container every week. Even though it's picked up every week, if you put it out, not everyone fills that every week. So I don't quite understand, in terms of the cost of changing containers and so forth, people already have their containers. I don't quite understand a reason for a change, and maybe you save on not having the recycled trucks come out every week. Maybe that's a savings, but from the point of view of the consumer, I think less complicated is better, if they can put it out any week, you know? So I'm not sure that's good. The other thing is that landfills actually need fruit and vegetable and organic waste and dirt and things like that, because landfills need a certain component of waste along with, you know, the metal and plastic and so forth. So I'm not sure why we're getting more complicated in that direction either. It just seems complicated.
Right. Pat has some handouts here that might help a little bit. These are some descriptions of some of the promotional materials that we could put out, including a schedule, a pickup schedule. And, yes, I agree that it is, there is a complexity added there, but the experience has shown that the advantages of it in terms of increased recycling and reduced costs. Are there, I think, Pat, you can speak to that a little bit more?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Good evening, Patrick Greavy from Waste Management. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and to have this discussion, and certainly, we appreciate our partnership with your community that we've had for all these years. By way of how this all came about, I guess, I've met with Jeff and with the members of the environmental commission on... the Environmental Commission on a number of occasions over the past couple of years to talk about the recycling program, how to make it more effective. It really, as Jeff mentioned, how to drive diversion from the waste stream. So to extract more of the value from the waste stream that is now literally going in the trashcan and ending up in our landfill. And these are the items shown on the first page of the handout. All types of fiber material, paper, plastic, junk mail, phone books, newspapers, tin cans, what-have-you, glass. All of these items are still, to a good degree, very much so in the trash as opposed to in the recycling bin. And so the trend in our industry over the past couple of years has been to change the type of the container. And while there is savings in that, probably equally, or maybe even more so now, the reason for that change is to drive that diversion, to get the diversion from the landfill up. And so with all of these types of programs that we've implemented across the country, you see two things happen. One, you see the average pound, pounds of recyclable material per home per week that come to the curb and collected increased. Most communities average somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five pounds if you spread what comes out every week over all the units that you're picking up. With these, you start to see diversion rates in the eight, 10, and 12 pounds per unit per week on average. And so in some cases, you're getting almost double. It's not just because of what's in the container, it's also because of the number of people who participate. You usually have 30, maybe 40, when you're working with bins, if a community is really into recycling, 50% out on any given week. With these programs, you start to see the rate of set-out increase to somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 70, sometimes even 80% out, in terms of the number of containers that are coming out to the curb on their pickup day. Now, the container is large, it's a 96-gallon cart, it's the same one your residents can rent now. And as Mr. Burgoyne has indicated, you know, not everybody puts it out every week. And even with this program, not everybody puts it out every two weeks. Some people may only bring it out one time a month because of the size of the container, but they're using it at their home. If it's there, you know, they're continuing over that month or that two-week period to put their materials in it. Some families that are large, we've got a provision in the program that, just like they can now, if they want to, they can rent a second cart. And believe it or not, we have people with two 96-gallon carts at some households that are using those for recycling and diverting everything they can from their waste stream. So it's a question of savings, you know? The route is going to get a little bit more efficient, but not all that much, because you remember, we're going to invest somewhere in the neighborhood of $175,000 to $200,000 to outfit the community with the carts. And so there's going to be that investment that comes in, and it'll be offset by some of the savings. Cost, at the end of the day, is a bottle wash for the community, but I think you'll see the value in the diversion rate and the increase in that diversion.
Additional questions? Ms. Tahar?
Yes, some of this has been answered, but I'm looking at the, over the past three years, the diversion rate has dropped from 29.5% to 26.7%. I assume that's of the total of everything.
Total volume, correct.
The total volume, okay. So over three years, that's less than 3%. So my question was, is that really significant? But at this point, that doesn't seem so relevant to me, based on what you've just said about switching to the carts. In your experience, in other communities, leads to higher participation from members of the community.
Correct.
So really, I'm willing to just forego that question and say that just by reason of the fact that we can expect higher participation in recycling for making this change makes this definitely worthwhile, and I will support it.
Any other questions? Mr. Rhodes?
Just wanted to say that I support all of these changes, too. One of the advantages of going to the bi-weekly collection is that there's going to be less wear and tear on our roads and streets. And there's a definite benefit to that, not able to quantify it, but... And then, one of the members of the Environmental Commission had raised the question about how easy it would be for an older person to move one of these curb carts around. And so Mr. Fordyce provided one to me, being an older person, and I found it was really, really easy. It's not a problem at all, and it was easier for me to move than it is to pick up the smaller tote thing when we have filled it with newspapers or magazines. It gets pretty heavy at that point in time, and I didn't have to pick up the cart at all, just tilt it and push it. So that's good. And then, I think the addition of allowing our residents to put out one bulk item without charge or without calling ahead, that certainly is a simplification of that process. And I think that will encourage more people to dispose of things in a proper manner. And I like the fact that the cost is staying the same as it is under the current contract.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Gearbox, did you have a?
Just quick, what do you anticipate as participation, once you go to the larger bins? How many people are going to want to participate? You're saying that there more will participate going to the larger bins?
Correct. Yeah, you'll have a higher percentage of set-out every week in your community. I mean, I think easily, it will be 60%, and I'm pretty comfortable saying it's going to be beyond that. I mean, we, the handout that this is from, this is from New Baltimore, Michigan, and I apologize, it's just a photocopy. This is excerpts of the guide related to recycling, just to give you an idea of how it works. But, you know, our folks there on the street are telling us, they're, right now, they're about 80 to 90% out in terms of the set-out rate since we've gone from the bins to the carts. So that community has really embraced the change, and I think yours will as well.
Any additional questions? Mr. Peters?
Just curious, I'm just wondering, when Waste Management picks up a cart full of, say, newspaper and cardboard, where does that go?
Where does it go?
Yeah, where's it physically go?
We use the recycle center that is located in New Boston for your material, and we also use sometimes the Ann Arbor Material Recovery Facility.
Are you paying a tipping fee, or you get a tipping fee when you bring those in?
Yes. It depends. It's kind of like gas prices, it comes and goes. I always tell people, in the time that I've been with Waste Management, I have seen that fee fluctuate everywhere, from us paying north of $40 a ton to have the material processed, to us obtaining just north of $40 a ton, and it's been everywhere in between. It's about flat right now.
About flat right now? The same for glass and tin and?
Well, it's a single-stream program, so they have a price for single-stream material that comes in, mixed together, all in the same truck, and so our price is based on that. Yes, for instance, cardboard, if you can get clean cardboard, yeah, that, at times, has more value, if you can bring them, you know, a whole load of aluminum. So they price those things separately. But single-stream?
But you don't do the sorting? You contract that?
We do not. We use third-party facilities to do that. And if you've never gone to one of those facilities, the one in New Boston is state-of-the-art. If you haven't gone, I encourage you. In fact, I'd be willing to help make the arrangements if you want to go. It's really neat to see how they sort this stuff out and the technology that's available.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Burgoyne?
Of the materials that are shown here?
Yes.
The idea is to put everything in the cart, whether it's cardboard or clear glass or whatever.
Correct.
What happens when people put green glass, brown glass, other things in there, and you get this entire cart, and you don't know that maybe 15% of it is different from what you're asking?
Yeah, actually, at the MRFs, we use, especially the one in New Boston, they have a market for what they call mixed glass at times, and so they stockpile it, and from time to time, they're able to recycle that material. Now, people do put things in the cart that they shouldn't. So one of the things you'll see if you go to the curb, to the MRF, as they call it, the Material Recovery Facility, is they do have a residuals pile, where things that should not have been in there, you know, are sorted out through the process and then disposed of. So at times, things go in that aren't supposed to be in there and are not recyclable, and they sort those out. Yes?
Why couldn't you continue to pick up the recyclables every week, rather than doing some type of schedule with that? And then, the unusual item, which is the bulk items, why couldn't you go to a less frequent schedule on that instead? Because that's not the thing you put out every week. We used to have it once a year. You could have it four times a year. You could have it first of the month, or something. Something people would know that wouldn't change. And then do the recyclables every week, because I think in terms of the larger containers, some people may not have the space, and it's going to be one thing. Another thing is that if people have the space, but they don't have the memory as to, you know, oh, am I skipping this week or whatever, and there's holidays? I think it would be less confusing to keep it simple.
We certainly can do anything that the community wants in terms of frequency of collection. This seems to be the trend in the industry in terms of balancing off, one, efficiencies of our routes, and predictability of what's going to be out at the curb when we come to your community. So for instance, with the bulk on a monthly basis, it makes the route a little bit more unpredictable. You've got that spike in volume one time a month, where you've got to deploy resources, where if you think about our business as a production business, if I can spread that out, so I know I've got to, within a range of predictability, send this many trucks and this much crew to pick up that community, it makes it more efficient for us, and it helps to keep the cost down for you.
Well, then allow it every week, but why can't you do the recyclable pickup every week?
Certainly, we can. It's a matter of looking at what does that do to the cost and what does that translate to for the cost to the community. But this allows it to be a cost-neutral proposal coming out of the gate for you. If we look at every week recyclables, I have to factor in the cost of that route, the efficiency of that route, plus the capital that we put into the deal for the carts. With the every-other-week schedule, we can do it at the price you're at now and make these other changes.
Okay. If I might, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to that note, I certainly appreciate that the easier, the better. I certainly agree with that, and certainly, the easier the better with the larger cart. That is very easy for folks. And then, adjusting to, there certainly will be a transition period.
There will be.
And, but, in, I've been in a community where, went to, it was every other week, and it was, now, they hadn't had anything to change from, but it went every other week is how we started. And it was a little bit, there was a little bit of transition time, a few months to people getting used to that. Okay, which week was it? But they did, it was very successful once they determined it. And I think if we can do, partner with Waste Management to do a solid educational effort by promoting this and then sending the calendars out that are pre-marked and that helps them, I think it'll be very positive. Pat, I don't know if you can speak to some examples of the transition periods?
I can. You know, New Baltimore is the most recent community that we did. That's where this guide is from. And again, this isn't the whole guide, and it's a much better quality piece of material. But what we do is, at the onset, you know, there's some initial notifications, maybe it's a postcard to the residents or something like that, saying, hello, Mr. or Mrs. Resident, you know, there's going to be a change to your program, and this cart's going to arrive at your curb side, and please look for it, it's going to be there during this timeframe, okay? And we deliver them one by one to the houses, and then it lets them know that inside that cart is going to be basically the user's guide. So this comes in a, oh, it's packaged, excuse me, Ma, I stepped away from the microphone. Comes packaged up in a plastic sleeve like this, and there's a hook inside the lid of the cart, and it's hung on there. And so when the cart shows up at the curb and they open up the cart, they should see it right there, and hopefully, they'll take it out and take the time to read it. Now, inevitably, there's human nature involved, not everybody does. So a couple of things happen. First week comes, oh, it's time to go, all the carts come out, or a good amount of them, and in the wrong area. Then we use our route supervisors to help notify people that, you know, through a tag on the cart or what have you, that, hey, this is not your week, and we'll be back next week to pick up your side of town, if you will. And yes, it's a little frustrating for people, but as the process continues, inevitably, and your town is a pretty good example, you have a lot of what I'd call neighborhoods, you know, there's a number of people on the street that, for whatever reason, they become the recycling captains. They don't even probably know it, but everybody's looking out the window, hey, does Jeff have his cart out this week? It must be recycling week, I think I'll put mine out, too. So as time goes on, folks do come to understand it, and basically, even without the guide, are aware of when to put their carts out. It is, I guess, a little chaotic at first, and there will be some phone calls, I won't kid you, people saying, oh, jeez, why did we have to do this and whatnot and so on. But, you know, we've had a number of experiences doing this, and it always seems to work out, and they do seem to figure it out. The other thing that does happen is people say, cart's too big and I don't like it. Want to keep using my bin, or, you know, I don't recycle, so don't bring me one. And if somebody says that and they don't want it, we'll be happy to take it back from them. But in many instances where that was, has happened, month, two months into the program, we have a good number of those people who said they didn't want it calling and saying, bring that cart back. I've been watching my neighbors use this thing and seeing what they're doing, and I'd like to try it now. So it really has become a popular program for us, and, you know, there are a number of communities around you, Ann Arbor, I think, and...
Pittsfield.
Township have all gone to cart recycling. The ones that come to mind that I've done personally are Huron Township, Brownstown Township, and most recently, the City of New Baltimore, that have all switched to this program. And, you know, after about the initial, first couple of goes at the schedule, people seem to catch on in with the schedule.
Mr. Burgoyne?
What do people do with their blue and green recycled bins that they have now?
We do a couple of things. We tell folks, if you don't want the bin, certainly, some communities say, bring it down and drop it off at the DPW if you don't want it, and we'll hang on to them. But most people keep them, because I think what a lot of people do is, you know, they put it in the breezeway or they put it somewhere, and that's the initial, I can open the door and pitch it in there, I don't have to go all the way over to the cart.
Dump it.
And then when it gets full, I dump it. So, you know, people find a lot of things to do with recycling bins, even when they don't have a cart, besides recycle. So we always offer and recommend, let the residents keep them. And I've had very, I mean, some people don't want it, so you give them a chance to come and drop it off somewhere, or if you want, you know, put it out at the curb and we'll pick it up.
All right, let me start with this. Because this is, it's a pretty significant change, or at least what's being proposed currently is a pretty significant change, we want council members to have ample opportunity to absorb this and ask any pertinent questions of staff. So with that being said, I think what we're going to plan on is that this come back for official action at our first meeting in January. That should give council members plenty of opportunity to ask any questions, raise any concerns. Does that present any problems from your end?
It's January 6th.
Yes.
As long as we mutually agree that. We, that is not a concern.
Okay.
Please take the time you need. As Jeff indicated, there's these rules in the contract, but we can mutually agree to change them.
Okay.
If that's what you'd like, we'll consider that.
All right. So then, my next question or comment is, and I've heard from, I believe, Ms. Tahar and Mr. Rhodes on this, both of you seem to be comfortable with what's being proposed. Is that correct?
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Is that correct, Mr. Rhodes? Mr. Burgoyne offered something alternative that he would like to see some sections maybe looked at and evaluated. Is that correct, Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, I, if other communities do it, I'm maybe okay with it. I don't want to, I don't know this stuff, so...
Okay. Well, let's start down at this end of the day, I'll stand. Mr. Roth, do you have any problems with what's being proposed?
Not at all, unless, I want to be sure that they post a calendar.
I think we can rest assured of that.
It's very important to that.
Yes, that'll be part of our responsibility to educate your residents on when we're going to be there to pick it up.
Right.
Absolutely.
Mr. Gearbox?
Yeah, I'm fine with, as long as we give sufficient lead time for citizens to give us some feedback. I mean, because of the holidays and everything coming up, and the 6th is usually a very quick meeting.
Right.
Maybe the week, the two weeks after that, like the... Maybe the week, the two weeks after that, like the 20th.
I think, is that?
Because you said by mutual agreement, so if we could adjust it for that. I just want to make sure that our papers and our social media have a time to put this information out there so that everyone understands what we're proposing. Because this is a big change. And, I mean, it's a good idea and everything, but I just want to make sure that we've done our due diligence in making sure that everyone understands what we're doing. I see all the benefits of this. The change to the big carts is going to be a little.
Well, I mean, conversely, you know, to your point, if in fact, and you're, generally speaking, you're correct that the agenda at our first meeting in January is pretty light on action items and agenda items, there might be some merit in having it on that agenda because it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. I mean, I could be wrong. I guess, gentlemen, you're the two who have done the heavy lifting on this issue. Is there anything problematic about delaying it even further to the second meeting in January?
Why can't we do this at our next meeting? Why?
Well, the problem with that, the idea behind the 180-day ahead of time was if council chooses not to do an extension, then we need to put together an RFP and do a whole new contract.
Okay.
So that's the idea there. It's not so much, you know, for Waste Management benefits, for staff's benefit to have time to go through that whole bidding process, which would be a substantial effort.
Okay. Let me get, let me stay on this question. So I've heard from Mr. Roth, Mr. Gearbaugh, and Mr. Rhodes that they are comfortable with what's being proposed. Ms. Tahar has also articulated that. Mr. Peters?
I'm fine.
Okay. Initially, I have some similar concerns to those that have been articulated by Mr. Burgoyne. I like my small recycling receptacle and I don't want this big bulky cart in my garage. But I'm cognizant of the fact that it's not all about me. So it's one of those things where, you know, my criticism and my angst may be kind of a flash in the pan and then I'll get over it and move on. But initially, that's the way I feel. So it sounds like there's consensus on moving forward with what's being proposed. Let's then talk about dates since there seem to be a number of dates thrown out. And I couldn't help but hear Mr. Burgoyne mention something about bringing it up at the next council meeting and there's really nothing to prevent us from doing that. So if there aren't any real questions or concerns, we certainly can bring it up and put it on the agenda as an action item at our next meeting in December. Ms. Tahar?
Yeah, I would be in favor of taking it up at the next meeting. I see Mr. Gearbaugh's point about additional time to get feedback. But in fact, the period that we are extending it is the time probably least likely for people to engage with us about recycling and trash removal because it's the holiday period. So I don't really see a benefit in terms of actual interaction of pushing this off until into January. If we want feedback, we should just get out there vigorously in the next two weeks and get it done.
You comfortable with that, Mr. Gearbaugh? Don't know? Mr. Roth, what's your opinion on this issue?
I really don't care.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes?
I'm in favor of bringing it back at our next council meeting.
Okay. Mr. Peters?
I'm with Mr. Roth.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne?
I'm in favor of bringing it back, but I still have one question.
Okay. Let me just, it sounds like there's consensus then to bring it back. And, you know, really, the only reason and the only merit to delaying it were, was, excuse me, if council members had additional questions, concerns, or wanted to think or mull some of the specifics over. But since there seems to be no glaring concerns or objections, I think we can probably bring it back for action at our next meeting, so two weeks from tonight. Mr. Burgoyne?
The one question I still have is, you know, you rinse out your glass, you make sure your cardboard and stuff is clean and so forth. But then, here you are in July and you've got a new policy of throwing in fruits and vegetables in there. And these things are to high heaven and you missed the two-week item. So you've got to go two more weeks. I have a concern about throwing in something putrid along with accessible recyclables.
That's a different program.
Oh, what's that?
That goes on with yard waste, which is picked up every week.
Yeah, the fruit and vegetable go in with the yard waste, which is, remains an every-week pickup.
Oh, and what container do you use for this organic?
Either the craft paper yard waste bags you pick up at the hardware store or you can use a trash can. And we supply stickers to place on them, to label them as yard waste containers.
Oh, I see. So it's considered part of yard waste?
Yeah, it's in addition to the yard waste program.
I can assure you, Mr. Burgoyne, fruit and other compost material can be no more putrid than the grass that I smell. So I understand your concern, but I think there are multiple things that go in those yard waste bags that smell pretty foul when the weather starts to cook it. So, but point well taken. Any additional questions? No, okay. Pat, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And.
Better time this evening.
Yeah, we'll plan to have this come back as an action item in two weeks.
Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, last up on the agenda this evening was a discussion item added by Mr. Burgoyne, council guidelines. Mr. Burgoyne, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. I wanted to talk about the council guidelines and talk about three or four things connected with it. Our council guidelines state that council members should ask for clarifying information. Council deliberations should be on issues rather than personalities. Council will have a transparent and accessible decision-making process based on accurate information. And in my experience, city council does many good things well when it can deliberate with accurate information. I want to pass one item down, which saw on the paper. Personal income increases 4.7% in one year. And in the prior year, it was 3.25%. I think that's one item that we should just keep that in mind when we consider staff's income. I think staff's income is a subset of personal income in the area, or area income. So that's one bit of information. The other, second point I have is that the annual audit has revealed good and accurate information. And I think we should base some of our future thoughts on some of the information that comes out of the annual audit. It differs quite a bit from the information that we got projected to us earlier in the year. Okay. Also, I think we need to have more information and more and accurate information for the city council to take action to accommodate economic growth by developers. I think this needs to actually come to the council. For example, if, if growth, if housing growth had been supported two or three years ago, it would have brought the economic benefit to this government about equal to the amount of taxes that were raised. And three, two or three years from now would be double that benefit per year. So I think that we need to work on some, we need to get the information and resolve issues and move forward with economic growth. I think it's a very important issue. The council guidelines says that we should get full and accurate information and work with that. So I've tried to seek that. Last year, we had planning sessions in November and December and I was invited, even though I hadn't come on board yet until January. And I stated the number one issue that we should resolve should be growth, to accommodate that growth, make it happen. I'm still there. Also, I think we need statistically accurate information on taxpayer preferences. I think we need to ask taxpayers for direction. If they see value in spending on discretionary projects, I think we should listen to them and follow what they want. And I also have comments on what I presented to council last week where I said backroom deliberations. I really should have, I should have been more accurate. I should have said that it wasn't a whole bunch of people in backroom deliberations. I only meant that the mayor and city manager talked and then the mayor came to us and said, we have no more street funds. So we need to have meetings and thinking, to think about whether we're going to propose something for a tax increase in August or not. I didn't mean that the entire council members had met in backrooms. What I meant was that their offices are at the back of City Hall. Other than that comment on backrooms discussions, I saw Mr. Marl and Mr. Gearbaugh's emotional comments as attacks against me where I'm just looking for facts. I'm looking for what I believe will be accurate information. And I, I think it's important for the city council to get the true information. I don't know what else. That's basically my comments. I actually wrote them out. I'm going to pass it down. But I felt beleaguered last week. And I still think I'm going to look to try to find what's true. And I'm going to push to, for city council to get information and to be able to act on it. I think the most important thing that we have not done is to accommodate economic growth through the housing development. We need to do that and I think it should come to city council.
Do you have anything further, Mr. Burgoyne?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your comments and certainly no one would deny the fact that it's important that council members ask questions and gather the appropriate amount of information prior to taking action and voting on a substantive policy matter. I would further add, as I've mentioned in the past, that a number of economic development strategies are being discussed and talked about within the LDFA-TIFA task force, which Mr. Gearbaugh is a member of. A number of prominent business members, members of the business community, excuse me, are also part of that group. And when it finalizes its work and makes a recommendation, not only will the EDC, TIFA, and LDFA boards be part of that dialogue, but council will be as well. And certainly, no one would disagree with the importance of economic development and the, the role that future housing developments play in that process. So I appreciate your comments on that front. Is there any, Mr. Rhodes?
I just had a couple of comments. One is, I'd like to say that the lack of new housing within the city of Saline was not unique to the city. That was common throughout the entire state of Michigan. People were not buying homes. Builders were not, therefore builders were not building them. And I don't believe there is anything that the city of Saline could have done to have changed that situation at that point in time. There were several of us working as individuals to try to encourage some more housing construction. But, you know, building contractors, they need to be, have some assurance that the product that they put their money and their time and effort into is going to sell for at a price that they can make a profit at because that's how they make a living. And when that doesn't happen, they just don't build or they move out of the state or they go into some other activity. So that was the one comment. And the second comment is that I, for one, am very comfortable with the idea of our mayor and our city manager talking about possibilities and throwing out ideas amongst themselves before it comes to city council. But I think that's, ideas have to start from someplace. And those are the two individuals who lead our community and they're the ones that I think are charged with primarily bringing those ideas to us. And then we act on them or we don't act on them. But I think it needs to come from them to start with. Not 100% everything, of course, but I'm perfectly fine with them doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, I do see on Ann Arbor-Saline Road, we have large development. We have the possibility of annexation to our west and that hasn't gone anywhere. Although, it could have happened three years ago. Could have happened two years ago. Not a lot of construction would have been done at that time. But Syo's got a large development going. Pittsfield's got large developments going. It changes the tax base so much that, you know, in the downtown Steve Dodge property is the only infill. And that's only going to be a small fraction of the value of what annexation development would be. So, and there's a lead time to this. You don't just resolve something and then it's built right away. It takes time. The developers have been trying to resolve it. And I think it needs to come forward to us and we need to share the information and make it happen. It's a big deal.
Absolutely. And rest assured that when there's something tangible to discuss and debate, that this body will be privy to that information. We move on now to public comments, our second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question of city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Is there any other business to come before salient city council this evening? Mayor Protam Tahar?
I just have a question about, we have one additional memo on the bench that we received tonight.
Oh, excuse me.
Were we supposed to discuss that or is it just informational?
Yeah, just informational.
Okay.
It's not really a for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Apologize for not acknowledging that earlier. Thank you. Okay? Any additional business? No, then we will have our next regularly scheduled meeting on December 16th at 7:30 PM. Currently, we are not scheduled to have a work meeting. However, I do need to note, because I've been informed of this, well, just earlier today, this afternoon, there are a couple of issues in the hopper. So if something is timely and requires council discussion and more deliberation than what's normally provided during a regular meeting, we will have a work meeting scheduled on the 16th. But I'll send you an electronic communicate to that effect if that is the case. Just wanted to tip you off so you're not surprised and blindsided if you receive some sort of communicate. Okay? Okay? So with that, there are no absences, so we can dispense with that motion. And I would seek a motion to adjourn this regular city council meeting at 9:41 PM.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Peters. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned.